Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting. Tonight's city council meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to be, please, take the roll call.
Bowring?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Kassarag?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Pashki?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We begin our council meetings with the pledge of allegiance. I would kindly ask Mr. Bergman and Mr. Lisk to please lead us in the pledge. The dramatic pause is impressive. We will, we will follow your lead. How's that?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, under item 3A, we have the pleasure of introducing fleet mechanic technician Patrick Lisk and street maintenance worker Kyle Bergman. We're going to go alphabetical, which is reverse on the agenda. Mr. Bergman, join us at the podium. Thanks for your enthusiasm.
No problem.
Did Tiffany make it in?
Uh, she, no, she never did. She's out in my vehicle right now, just hanging out.
That's impressive. Now, you joined us on December 4th of 2023, and now we just have the opportunity to formally welcome you aboard.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're delighted you're here.
Well, thank you.
Do you want to share with people how you and I first met?
Um, so where the tornado had taken place, um, over by Pepper Valley, uh, we were just doing our last little bit of cleaning up, and, uh, I remember Kevin came around in his car, and he's talking to me about this, and I'm, he tells me his name, I'm like, I have no idea who this guy is, you know, I've never met this guy before in my life.
I said, "Hi, I'm Kevin." He goes, "Eh, who cares?"
And then you said Kevin Burns, and I was just totally, like, blown away. It was like meeting like your favorite celebrity, so.
Oh, well, you got to get out more, man.
Right.
But thanks for the obsequious statement. We'll make sure that's recorded.
Yeah.
But you did go to work that, that, that day, and of course, immediately thereafter, so thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Our friend Kyle's a 2016 graduate of Geneva Community High School.
I am, yep.
Worked for King County's Forest Preserve District for six years. So, were you all over the county then?
Correct, yep. Um, so it was for about four and a half, five years.
Okay.
We, everybody would go, you know, everywhere.
Yeah, right.
And then my last supervisor said, you know, we want to go to a quadrant-based system, so I was kind of more towards like the Aurora and Batavia, uh, area for my last little bit. But yeah, I've, I've been around, and I was very loyal to that place. I attained a lot, retained a lot of skills, and it was, uh, kind of, kind of fun.
Do you have a fa, a favorite preserve?
Uh, Leroy Oaks?
Oh, sure.
Or Big Rock. Those are my two favorite.
Oh, no kidding.
Because, I mean, just the flowers there and just how everything's laid out and the lakes and the creek and stuff, I mean, it's, it's wonderful.
It's beautiful, isn't it?
I mean, I could, I could be in there for forever, for hours.
That's awesome, man. Now, according to Kyle, uh, his hobbies include working out and kayaking. Where do you kayak?
As of right now, um, we go to Lake Shabana, my girlfriend and I.
Oh, yeah, right out, right out 30.
Yep.
Yeah, no kidding.
And, uh, we were renting kayaks. We tried it out like a couple summers ago, and we just kind of fell in love with that hobby as, I mean, we do a lot of stuff together, but that one was particularly one of her favorites and now one of mine, so.
And this other person is Danielle, who's in the car.
Yeah, no.
Correct?
Tiffany.
Not Danielle, it's Tiffany, who's in the car.
Yes.
Tiffany, so Kyle arrived early, and, and you were talking about Tiffany, and I said, "Well, where's Tiffany?" Well, she's in the car. She, she wasn't certain she was allowed in here.
Yeah, I, I didn't.
Do you want us to pause and see if she arrives?
Um, I mean, she's, I told her to come in.
Does she feel safe out there?
She's not, yeah, yeah.
Does she?
She just doesn't have any clothes to, um.
Be careful what you're about to say, Kyle, because this is.
She doesn't look like us as professional.
You know, you're going to be ripped tomorrow from your colleagues at Public Works for saying that.
I know, I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is going off the rails quick, isn't it?
Stick to the script.
Stick to the script, yes. Kyle enjoys speaking in public?
Nope.
About Tiffany. What else should we know about you, sir?
Um, I do fly fishing with my parents.
Oh, that's cool.
Or my, my dad, I should say. My mom has not done that yet, but my dad and my brothers, it's become one of our family hobbies too.
Do you head out west then and do?
Yeah, we go up to Wisconsin.
Oh, you do?
And go in the trout streams and stuff like that, so we've been doing that for about a year now.
And you make your own flies?
Uh, we're starting to, yep.
You're starting to?
Mm-hmm.
That's a whole different world, isn't it?
Correct, yep.
And is it catch and release, or do you catch and cook?
You can catch and you can cook, uh, some of, some of the streams, not all of them.
Okay.
Um, it is a challenging hobby, though, because I have no patience, so sitting there, trying to be patient with the fly, it's kind of, can be kind of, um, not fun for me.
So, you're, you're literally standing in knee-deep water and just casting, and then you stand there and wait?
Correct. My brothers have better luck than I do. I mean, we never went to any classes or anything, and, uh, my, the middle brother, Kevin, just right underneath me, which is same name as yours, um, he.
Thank you for pointing that out.
He, uh, has better luck every single time we go.
Seriously?
He does, even when we go, uh.
That's the name, isn't it?
Yeah. We, we also, I've gone hunting in the past too for.
That's cool.
Pheasant and quail. Um, so Kevin also steals the show right there.
Where, where are the brothers located?
At my parents' house too.
Oh, they are, okay, cool.
So, we're in Mill Creek.
Yeah, right. That's awesome, man.
Mm-hmm.
What else, what else, Kyle? So far, so good at Public Works?
Yeah, so good.
Street maintenance keeps you busy, doesn't it?
I've learned a lot in my three months.
I bet you have.
They don't slow down.
Isn't that something?
It's, it's, they throw me right in there and say, "Go do it."
Yeah.
So.
And where do we normally see you during the day then?
Um, I, it kind of varies every day.
Wherever, wherever the day takes you?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm kind of doing more tree work and learning how to.
We are.
Get more comfortable in the bucket truck, because I have a fear of heights. I am not a fan of heights, so Clint, yeah, I'm sure you know him.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Clint Bogdan?
Yep.
Yep.
He's trying to get me to kind of overcome that fear, which I, you know, admire his patience with it and stuff like that, you know, because he's not making me go up there, but he's, just little by little, he's kind of trying to make me get used to certain heights.
Sooner than later, you'll be up in that bucket truck.
Then he says you'll come back down. Yep. He said he's trying to get me ready for that, so.
Will, will Clint text us when that day comes, so we can all go out there?
Maybe, I don't, maybe, I don't know. You can ask him.
That'll be fun, man.
It would be.
That'd be fun. We are delighted to have you onboard. I'd like to open it to the council members, if they have any questions or comments for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
And say hi to this Tiffany.
Yeah, I don't, she could have came in at any time. I don't think we're going, so.
Yikes. Yeah, watch the video later, yeah. Welcome aboard.
Well, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much for your service.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Mr. Lisk?
Hello.
How are you, man?
Good, how are you?
Mr. Lisk joined us as the fleet maintenance technician, and you said to me, things are kind of slow right now.
A little bit.
A lot of our plows weren't out there plowing during the winter, therefore, a lot of the work necessary.
Yeah, street guys didn't break a bunch of plows, which is, this is a good thing.
That is a good thing, isn't it?
No offense.
No, yeah. I see you guys are close, that's exciting. Mr. Lisk is married to Danielle, forgive me for mixing up the names, with four children. Now, perhaps all of you will be as shocked as I was when I learned about the four kids, 18-years-old, 15-years-old, 11-years-old, and four-years-old. Your 18-year-old is shopping for schools now.
Yep.
Any favorites leaning toward?
Uh, Iowa and Mizzou are the top contenders right now.
Well, that's exciting. Wow, so you have two Bulldogs, as you live in Batavia.
Yep.
So, your 18-year-old and 15-year-old are proud Batavia Bulldogs.
Yes, they are.
Very cool. You were an automotive technician for 22 years.
Yes.
Where did you practice your craft?
Started out in Glen Ellen. A little shop actually took me in as a intern while I was in high school.
Is that right?
Yes.
Glen Bar West, correct?
Yes. And, uh, after a few months, they said, "If you want to continue and actually get paid, you can keep working there."
That's cool.
So, throughout high school, I started my career and kept going while I still went to college at College of DuPage.
They have a good program there too.
They do.
Very good program.
Yep.
Did you see, well, Bonsi just opened a tech building.
I did see that, actually.
Isn't that wild?
Yeah.
And of course, cars are different than they were 22 years ago.
Very different.
In fact, my daughter's car won't jump. Can you, can I text you tomorrow and see if you can come over?
Absolutely.
That'd be fun. And all these cars these days have all this nonsense on there, you can't just start the darn thing up.
No, you can't. Sometimes you have to talk to them to start it up.
You talk to the cars, do you?
Why not? It's when they talk back that you have to worry.
Are you afraid of bucket trucks?
No.
Hobbies, if not attending kids' sporting events. Are they in travel leagues and all that stuff?
Travel leagues, everything, yes.
It's a zoo, isn't it?
Ugh.
You like to work on classic cars.
Yep.
Define classic.
I am currently working on, well, my first one that I've had, and I still have, is a '69 Charger, so.
This is at your house?
Yes.
So, you tinker with that? Do the kids participate in such tinkering?
Sometimes, if I let them.
So, you're one of those guys who don't touch this thing?
Kind of.
When did you buy that?
In '02 I bought it.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Was it running when you bought it, or was it something you could fix yourself and?
It was slightly running. Needed work.
When you get it all back, brand spanking new, what is a '69 Charger in mint condition worth today?
It's hard to tell. I've valued that one out already. I priced it out about around 60.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Good lord.
Depending on the motor, it can go way up.
You also like to ATV trail ride?
Yep.
And where do you do that?
I do it a lot in, there's a couple places in Ottawa.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Um, but I have a little group that I go with, and we go to Wisconsin, and we've gone to West Virginia and Tennessee.
Really?
Yep.
No injuries?
Not totally. Last trip I went on, I totaled my ATV, so, but I didn't get injured, so.
How many ATVs do you have?
Uh, you just have two, one for my sons and one for me, and they would go on some smaller trails with me.
Are you allowed to drive ATVs on the streets in Batavia?
No.
Okay. That was such a, it's a tough crowd here tonight, man. I don't think shilky cares.
All right. That's good.
That's good, yeah. Who's shilky? Is that what you're going to ask?
No.
Okay. Your goal, and this is your words, is to get the kids through college and retire, quote, "with a whole lot of dogs."
Yeah.
You have two dogs now.
Two dogs now.
I asked why you don't have more, and you said, "The house is already full."
Yeah.
Why the love of dogs?
No.
Always, always love dogs?
Always, no.
What are the dogs' names?
Uh, my bigger dog is Bowser.
From Shauna?
And my little dog is.
Anybody older in the group catch that one? Sorry, but any younger dog?
Uh, is Wiser.
Bowser and Wiser?
Yeah.
Older, are they older dogs, or?
Yeah.
That's cool. So, what else do we need to know about you, Patrick? And you prefer Patrick, not pet?
Uh, it actually doesn't bother me either way.
Okay. So, Rick, what else should we know about you?
I don't know.
To, there, there's an expression that the only difference between doctors and mechanics is the language. Do you agree with that?
Kind of, yeah.
It's kind of a complicated.
It can be absolutely complicated.
Who's, uh, whose cars do you tend to see most often? Police, police cars? I'm just speculating, I have no idea.
Sometimes when we tell them to bring it in.
Oh, they don't know where to do that?
Eh, sometimes.
Ah.
You have some officers that are great about coming in for checks.
What about the officer in the back right corner?
He is good about bringing it in for checks.
He's good about.
You noticed when he walked in, didn't you? I did.
Well, we're delighted to have you onboard as well.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything for Mr. Lisk?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much for joining us too.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Make sure Tiffany's still out there.
And feel free to sneak out. Yeah, and Danielle too, yeah.
We just witnessed something that transpired, and we don't know what it is, but it's very exciting. Is that, is that an oil coupon?
Uh, yeah, I told him I was going to bring my car.
Thank you, gentlemen. If you need to sneak out, by all means, do so, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Item 3B, folks, is to proclaim April, the 26th, 2024, as Arbor Day in the city of Geneva. Is there such a motion?
Seven.
Motion by Kassarag? Seconded by?
What's that name again?
Pashki? Okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Fantastic, thank you very much. We're on to item 4, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine. Those items can be considered with one motion and voted upon accordingly. Is there such a motion? On item 5, the omnibus agenda. The omnibus fails for lack of a motion. Anyone interested?
This is our April Fool's Day joke.
Is it?
Can you not see it in their faces?
You guys planned this damn thing? You guys?
Okay, me and you, George.
Oh.
Make the next motion.
That was very good. I, I leaned over, I said, "Are they living?" It's like, that's awesome, man, well, that's why you're laughing so hard, Mayor? Let's try this again. For the interest of good governance, is there a motion to approve the omnibus agenda? Oh, fudge, boss. Thank you, alderperson, Mayor.
With great reluctance, alderperson, Mayor.
I, I dare ask, is there a second? Seconded by, oh, man, Swanson, well done.
Here's the hard part.
Clark, are you going to take the roll for me? Remember, this is a real motion. It's legit.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
The omnibus agenda, despite reluctance, has been approved with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We move to item number 8. This should be fun. Municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration, and we defer to an alderperson who wishes to repeat the eloquent words of alderperson Bruno.
Municipal bills for payment total $1,540,358.60.
Mayor, I move that we pay the bills, the amount for which is on, oh, man, our agenda and the individual items for which can be found in the city packet and on the website.
There's a motion by alderperson Bowring to approve the bills as presented, which are available hiss of facto, habeas corpus. Is that good? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor. Clerk Kellick, when you're available, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The bills have been approved to be paid with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We jump to item 10, presentation of ordinances and resolutions. 10A, consider resolution 2024-39, designated city authorized purchases of purchasers, excuse me, of road salt utilizing the State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Contract. Is there a motion?
Seven.
Motion by Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Pashki. This is table salt, just to be clear.
It is not.
Yeah. Courtesy of the American Diabetes Association.
Okay.
Oops.
All right, so the city of Geneva utilizes the State of Illinois Joint Purchasing System to supply road salt. Uh, in order to do this, the state is requiring a participation agreement form that lists the authorized purchasers for these orders. So, for your consideration this evening, is to authorize the city administrator, the director of public works, and the superintendent of streets and fleets to be listed as authorized purchasers for road salt under the agreement. So, we're not actually buying salt tonight, we're just authorizing those who can enter into those agreements. And we do have Director Babica with us if you have any additional questions.
Alderperson Kilburg? Is this alderperson Kilburg? Uh, I don't know if this is relevant or not, but I know that we'll be carrying a considerable inventory over, at least it would appear at this time. Approximately, what, what do we have in inventory from what we began the year with, at least a percentage or something close?
Such a dramatic approach to the podium, I love that.
Knees are sore.
Yeah, trying to.
No, um, the salt dome is full. We were, we actually took the last of our, received the last of our orders today. Uh, our salt dome is currently rated to hold about 1,600 tons. I'd be willing to bet if you put a scale underneath there, it's probably closer to 1,800 right now. Uh, they've been really cramming it in. Uh, it was a light season. Um, I guess theoretically, there's still snow in the forecast for tomorrow, but, um, it was a good year for us, and, uh, with Nate's aggressiveness and with the staff's aggressiveness, they've been actively cutting back our salt usage to, uh, really, really low levels that are keeping the service level at the highest standard, I think. Not I think, I know, but we still get the, uh, every now and then some feedback from the public.
That's good news, thank you.
Anyone else from the dais, from Mr. Babica? We have a motion by Marx, a seconded by Pashki to approve item 10A. City Clerk Kellick, please take the roll.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Item 10A has been approved by this council with a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. We jump to public comment. Anyone wishing to join us this evening who has a comment to share, or perhaps thoughts to share with the council? This is your time to do so. It's our turn to listen. New business from the dais, anyone? New business. This is, this is part of the joke, isn't it? Watch this one. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Seven.
Motion by Kassarag. We'll take, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're going to transition for about 30 seconds to the committee of the whole meeting, which is being chaired by the distinguished councilman from, or councilperson from the second work, Mr. Kassarag. We're gonna transition for about thirty seconds to the committee of the whole meeting, which is being chaired by the distinguished councilman from, or councilperson from the second work, Mr. Kassarag.
Uh, hello, and welcome to tonight's Committee of the Whole on Monday, April first, April Fool's Day. Um, please note that all alderpersons are in attendance, save Alderman Bruno. And our first item on the agenda is approval of the Committee of the Whole minutes for March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Do I have a motion? You, okay. Mayor with the motion, and Bowring with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So first item of business is consider draft resolution authorizing a contract with Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick Incorporated to complete fiscal year twenty-twenty-five wetland management services for Eagle Brook and on Brentwood's Pond subdivisions in an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. Bowring has the motion, and Marks with the second.
Okay, um, and if it's okay with the council, I'm just going to, the introduction also applies to item three B. Similar situation, just different property. So for your consideration this evening are the proposals from Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick, Inc. to perform wetland management services for SSA number eleven, which is Eagle Brook, SSA number thirty-two, which is on Brentwood's Pond, and then the next item will be for the water treatment plant. The proposals include an optional second and third year renewals at the same rate as fiscal year twenty-five, and staff, local homeowners, and Eagle Brook golf course owners have been pleased with their previous work and their responsiveness to the issues. Again, if you have any additional questions, we do have Slow Walker, Director Babica, with us this evening, who would be happy to address those.
Should probably sit closer up front next time, Director Babica. Any questions, any concerns, comments? Nope. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All approved, save Bruno. And three B, consider draft resolution authorizing a contract with Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick Incorporated to complete the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five wetland management services for the city's water treatment plant property in an amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Bashkey with the motion, Marks with the second. Questions, concerns? Pretty good. All in favor, please, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Opposed? Ah, let's see. Three C, consider draft resolution authorizing an agreement with Clark Environmental Mosquito Management Incorporated for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five mosquito abatement program in an amount not to exceed fifty-six thousand, four hundred, forty-four dollars. Moved by Bowring, seconded by Bashkey.
Okay, so the fiscal year twenty-five budget provides sixty thousand within the general fund to conduct a mosquito abatement within the city. The current provider, Clark Environmental, has prepared the proposal for your consideration, which includes conducting an aerial survey to identify breeding sites, maintaining a customer service center to respond to nuisance issues and customer care, and to maintain traps to surveil adult population for disease vectors, larval control, and adulticide applications if necessary. Clark Environmental has conducted mosquito abatement for the city since twenty-fifteen, and staff is confident in their ability to continue to provide this service. I would also note that in the packet this evening were copies of the frequently asked question pages from the CDC, the IDPH, and the Kane County Health Department with additional information. And again, we have Director Babica with us if you have any additional questions.
All right. No questions, no comments? All right, that was easy. Please indicate, if, uh, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And three D, consider draft resolution authorizing acceptance of a proposal to bind coverage for property, general liability, automobile, public officials' employment practices, law enforcement, crime, cyber, excess liability, and workman's compensation insurance effective May one, twenty-twenty-four. Motion? Alderman Marks? Alder Person Mayor?
Okay, so the city's commercial insurance package is set to expire April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. In tonight's packet was the premium summary from Arthur J. Gallagher, Inc. outlining the renewal proposal for these coverages. The recommended renewal maintains the city's existing coverages and limits for fiscal year twenty-five. It's a eleven point six percent increase over the expiring premium. We would note that the market for public entities continues to be impacted by Midwest property losses, interest rates, construction, and vehicle costs, and cyber attacks. With us this evening is the city's broker, Rich Stok, Stook, I can never, Stok, Stoklusa. Stoklusa, I should know this after sixteen years. And also Assistant City Administrator McCready, if you have any additional questions.
Any questions for our insurance broker, for Mr. McCready? Nothing. God, I'm surprised. Yeah. Everybody wants to get home to watch the game. Alderman Kilburg.
Yeah. Uh, I'd just like to know what your projections are for the next year or two as it relates to rate increases. Uh, yeah. We didn't want you to come all the way here tonight for nothing.
And you can say your name correctly for the record.
Oh, it's Rich Stoklusa.
Since I always butcher it.
No, no, no. So, yeah, I mean, we went through a lot of turmoil after COVID, and there was a lot of fluctuations with the rates, especially with cyber. Workers' compensation right now is pretty much flattened out. It's one of our better lines where five years ago was really horrific, especially in the state of Illinois. Uh, liability rates somewhere between seven and nine percent this year. What we're seeing with cities, counties, townships, I do a lot of special service districts and some other accounts, but my focus is primarily with public entities. The areas the hardest hit is the, the property sector, and we're seeing reinsurance rates going about twelve to fourteen percent because of the increased level in storms. So just to give you a real quick idea, I've got a map that I can send over to you, but last year alone, we had twenty-eight one billion dollar events across the country. And that's anything a million dollars. And when you look at it, you go, you think of Florida, you think of the East Coast, you think of California. Actually, where most of it was coming was from Texas, Oklahoma, all the way up straight up through the wind tunnel. So it had everything to do, or anything to do with hurricanes, windstorm, hail, fires, flooding, major, major damages. So I would say once that stabilizes, we're probably looking at single-digit increases over the next couple of years.
How's your company looking at global warming and the impact on, on insurance rates looking into the future? I mean, what I've read, we can expect more severe weather, more, more damage resulting from all the things that you've indicated.
Yep, exactly. It's the strangest thing I've seen, and I've been doing this for thirty-five years, but if you chart up the years where you have these billion-dollar events, over like the last twenty years, you'll see the little spikes, and then all of a sudden, you'll see a steep incline over the last eight years. And it's just unexplainable right now. It's just like back in twenty-seventeen, twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, we may have had a dozen, you know, across the country, maybe eight to ten or something like that. But now we're starting to see twenty-plus billion-dollar events.
Have you withdrawn from any markets because of the, the extensive claims, like for instance, Florida?
No, we're, we're a broker, so we really don't. We, we represent our clients in terms of placing it, so we don't take any risk.
Okay, some of the insurance companies that you work with, or are they withdrawing from those markets?
Uh, yes, for various reasons. They've withdrawn from liability from like Colorado, from East Coast for law enforcement issues, because they've taken away sovereign immunity from police officers. West Coast, a lot of property insurers are moving out. I think State Farm just pulled out, like canceled like thirty thousand policies. So they're, they're being selective. What's really kind of frightening is what they're doing with law enforcement right now.
Okay.
I mean, we, I, I talk to sheriffs and police officers, police chiefs all the time. They were looking at anywhere upwards about fifty percent of the police force retiring in the state of Illinois if that, the Safety Act included a removal of sovereign immunity for the, uh, police officers.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Nothing? Okay, thank you very much. Okay. What's up? Yep. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes? And last but not least, any public comments? Not sensing any? Uh, new business from the dais? Alderman Kilburg?
Yeah. Um, maybe Mr. Babica can comment. I see that the, the work on the wall on South, South Thirty-One has been completed. Is there any additional work that's going to be done? I see the tree's been removed, and I see that the work that's been done is excellent, but the thing is, is it's pretty contrasting to the existing wall. Is there anything planned to, to try to blend that more?
Getting a workers' comp claim in here.
Easy there. We're on a good run. Uh, yes, actually, there is. The contractor, as well as their restoration expert, have supplied me a proposal, and I'm negotiating with them right now to do a reassessment of the remaining segments. Received some last-minute guidance from Michael Lambert before he retired, and we are working with the property owners about replacing two magnolia trees over the sidewalk to replace the one that we had to remove.
So are you expecting them to remove the concrete facing that's on the remaining wall and then tuck pointing? Obviously, I know that the tree was, was something that was pretty important for the, the future of the wall, or at least the area that's been repaired, but what, what do you think they're planning to do to, to complete the project?
Well, the sculpt that I'm working on right now with, with the two experts is to perform an evaluation of the remaining wall segments, the remaining widths, and remediation and restoration strategies for each.
Okay, so that...
And then they'll be used in future budget processes as directed by the city council.
So in other words, we're gonna have some additional expense with the wall than you'd anticipate. In other words, the seventy-five thousand that we spent initially for the repair, that, that won't be sufficient for, for what you're referring to?
Yeah, you know, the, the very nature of the beast of why you have a public works department is that everything starts atrophying as soon as you put it in the ground. So that is a hundred and five years old, if we're take. So it's definitely, and some, some decision points are gonna have to be made by the city council during the budget process. And luckily for me, my job is just to research it and bring forward the recommendation, and then sit back and see what at least seven, six of you want to do.
That's a good non-answer.
Thirty-four years.
That's all I had. Thanks, Rich.
My pleasure.
Alderman Ruby?
Thank you. Rich, while you're here, can, can you provide an update on Geneva Drive?
As is what happened last weekend?
Yes, and the, I'm basically, it looks like all the townhomes are affected, but the, is the boil order still in effect for Joe Shaw Court?
Yes.
But only that street?
Correct. There was a segment of water main pipe that had to be replaced, and as such, we lost system pressure. And to follow the Illinois EPA protocols, a precautionary boil order was put into effect. Samples have been pulled. Once we get those samples back from the lab tomorrow, depending on what they say, we'll move forward with their, pretty, being fairly superstitious, I don't wanna jinx ourselves, but this is standard practice whenever we have a loss of system pressure of less than twenty-five PSI.
Okay, is, this may not be a simple answer, but how is it that only that one street is affected, not the, the ones on either side of it, when, when the entire street is dug up?
Well, it's, it's an excellent question. We place, or the city code now mandates water valves every six hundred feet in residential areas and every eight hundred feet in industrial areas. So whenever we do have an instance like this, we can really isolate those valves down, and that's the maximum distance. We tend to put valves a lot closer for intersections and whatnot. So we're really able to isolate specific neighborhoods if we need to for maintenance.
Okay, great. And do you have any idea how long the, the duration of being able to finish the project?
Well, there's three projects that are ongoing on Geneva Drive now. There's the water main repair, which has been completed, with the exception of the final restoration. And again, we're waiting for just the samples from the, from the, the state certified lab for that. There is a cable replacement program that's been ongoing, and that cable replacement program is gonna continue throughout the balance of this fiscal year and into next fiscal year.
And that's for power?
Correct.
Okay.
That's, that's a scheduled replacement of underground cables.
Right.
And then the, the third phase of the project, and this will be, of course, dependent upon what the bid letting is, and a formal approval by the city council, will be a resurfacing of Geneva Drive. So we're, we're really trying to make sure all the underground utilities are really dialed in and good to go before we put down fresh, fresh pavement.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Anybody else? Who wants to go home and watch the rest of the Iowa game? Don't say anything for Alder Person Kilburg. He doesn't want to hear anything. He's gonna watch it from, from the start. All right. Well, thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, Alderman Mayor, thank you.
You needed all in favor.
All in favor.
Now we're adjourned.
Now we're...